All right, we go ahead and call the city council meeting order Monday at 12:00 to 7:00 p.m. Roque.
Roque.
Michelle.
White Johnson.
Kirby Moynihan.
Doug Belter.
William Corvitz.
Uh, Josh Paul.
First, I just ask for a personal privilege, just to remind everybody that our food drop, the Monday food drop is tomorrow at 3:00. You know, with the church, if anybody knows of anybody that is in need, but no, please, because we got plenty, so. Um, I found a kind of funny thing that hit home with me on Facebook. It says, "This is your gentle reminder that one time in the Bible Elijah was like, 'God, I'm so mad, I want to die,'" you know? And so God said, "Well, here, have some food and why don't you take a nap?" So Elijah slept, ate, and decided things weren't so bad. So never underestimate the spiritual power of a nap and a snack, and I think that's a good reminder for all of us going through this COVID stuff. So, um, and for the business we have tonight, just take it easy, make the right decision as you can. Both right. Thank you, God, for the chance to be together tonight to talk about the business of this community and to remind us that we are indeed a community of relationships and it's about the people. Please be with us as we seek your visit for us and for each other. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Uh, final leaders.
United States of America, in the name of our holy and just hands, one nation, under our God, in his name, with the ready of the Lord.
All right, uh, who called the agenda?
Second.
Um, Baver?
Yeah.
Any votes? Motion to pass is tied at 4:00. Consent agenda? Any questions or concerns?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it. Allen Baver?
Yes.
Any votes? Motion to pass is tied at 4:00. Open forum. Um, Mike? You want to just come on up to the podium, state your name and address?
Yes, um, Michael Allen, 200 Greenback Drive right here in Montrose. And, uh, it just been in regards to the compo site. Um, I know that there's been situations. I've been here for eight years, long, many years. So, compo sites have been locked down time before this. Um, that was some people dropping off miscellaneous items, absolutely not compost type stuff. Um, and that was understandable. This time, um, it sounds like there's just a surplus of lumber and tree type materials. Um, we're not sure who it was that was doing it. Um, so the two questions I have is there surveillance on the site? So why wouldn't we take some of that into consideration and maybe work with the county? If and then maybe issue out some sort of warning slash citation to anybody that breaks through? And then two, um, just maybe try to keep it somewhat open on the weekends in some form? Those are just my two main concerns, because there's certain people I know in my neighborhood that don't have access to my food Friday. And, uh, they always have the eligibility to come in and get a heat for the weekend, but again, they're not, they're working right on their own Friday. So, uh, the convenience is gone. So there's got to be something better than what we have going on now. This does present what is, what has happened in the past, but maybe going forward, there's going to be an improvement on that. That was all. Alvin Williams.
We do have that later, um, under the wings, but if you want to go ahead, you want to talk about it now, because I'm sure there's only one person here.
Well, we're getting more than just wood products. We're getting plastic, glass, whatever something else behind the back of the car. We do get their license, then we get their picture of their vehicle.
Okay.
And I forward it to the sheriff, and they really can't do it, because it is a dump site.
Okay, so the legality of it all is, is that when they say perhaps drop off some plastic item that they can't fit in the repair machine for some reason, um, that now just became our problem?
Right. And all that's our problem once they throw them out there.
Yeah.
And they, they won't give me the person's name, because all I want the people to do is come and pick up their stuff. You know, who you did that across, then you come and get it, fine with that. I don't want to prosecute anybody.
And as far as the sheriff's office goes with giving information of, um, there's a lot of private data, a lot of public data, and the sheriff's office cannot share license plate information with a non-law enforcement agency. They have to go through other means to get that information. So the only reason, the only way that we would work with it is if we're going to prosecute them, which doesn't sound like the city really wants to pursue them a lot. Plus, um, judging by what I read on Facebook and stuff, there's a lot more that the city would like the cops to be doing rather than chasing people who are way three-inch
Yeah.
pieces of tree.
Yeah.
And doing stuff like that is very labor intensive for the sheriff's office. It takes time, energy, effort, um, and a lot of times it leads to no end anyways.
Okay.
That's kind of the hard part for the sheriff's office side of things.
Okay, that's understandable. So I guess my, my second point then would be is we've locked it down to prevent that from happening. Um, if you want to use it, come on in, grab a key, go use it, bring your key back. But that isn't necessarily that convenient for the s- people that live within the city limits here that want to use it. On a regular basis, I, I have five or six people just on my strip of the sidewalk, you know? Just talking to them, they're all pretty much same voice as me saying, "What can we do to make this so that we can just go back in and just start getting on a Tuesday night, drop off my yard cookies?"
Well, they can call in and get a key. We'll put it in the box.
Okay.
Outside with their name on it, that's where you list it.
Okay.
You know, they have to get it after hours. And all they have to do is return it in the box and inside. They have to get their information before we'll put the key out there.
Okay.
And we can know who they are, actually, if they're from town.
Yeah, oh yeah.
And then we're also looking in maybe next year, February, something to keep an eye out on.
Okay, yeah, and that's what, that was, I guess, where I was born with it was like, my mom lives in the Minnetoka area in, in that, that county. Uh, everybody has their own way of doing things, there are a lot larger things, so.
Right.
So on Saturday morning, 8:00 a.m., they're open. Um, and they're checking licenses, because I drove in there, my mom's 80, and I'm taking care of her yard, and I go up there and gets my licenses. You know, you're not a resident, so you can't come in here. I have to go throw my mom in the truck and burn her and just to get rid of her yard waste, but they're real picky about it, but.
Yeah.
Yep. That way you don't have people dropping off trees and tree services and stuff like that. So I think that's kind of what maybe was happening too, is that I got wind of that.
Yeah, we've caught those, and their phone numbers were actually on the vehicles. And I called them, they come and got their stuff.
Oh, they came back and grabbed it?
Yep.
They just weren't aware of it or?
Well, they just wanted to get rid of it, they weren't supposed to bring it in, they didn't.
Yep, yep, good. All right, well, it's good to hear. Thank you.
Hey, Wayne. Oh, sorry. Um, is there a place in the compo area that we can put like, you know, you said there's two inches of maximum? If we have like people that are cutting down trees, to put it out to the side where people can come and get like firewoods?
We could do that, one kind of liability, because if out there with a chainsaw, it starts cutting into smaller chunks, you know? And it's a good problem.
Well, I mean, you know, they just have, people just, you know, like we had that tree over in Persson, you know? Um, we offered to help take care of that, and then if somebody, if you were to put it down and then hit it with firewood, you're trying to get it.
We need to just go to the store.
Right.
And then lots of it, yes.
No, it's not, or, right, there's a city lawn chopper, like, what? As I say, if you get a, if you get a full wood chopper, you could really just, you know?
Chip it and then have it hollow enough. But I was going to go to a rock, and I said, yeah, but people could definitely get the three wood chips for the guy. Put it on a roll.
Did, did you ever get the, uh, any kind of data on when it's most used at all, Wayne?
Like some weekends, I mean, it's after hours.
So, right now, where it'd be the busy season for leaves and, um, you know, yard cleanups and all that kind of stuff, as I was mentioning before, um, with the burn restrictions, is there some way that we can figure out how that happens open? I mean, because we, we already know that not everybody's returning keys, so that it was out.
We just bought that most of them back.
I turned, I turned in a key tonight.
What?
I know, I mean, it took a ton to get those keys back, but, um, you know, we only have X amount to 3,000 residents, um.
But they're not only able to do it at the same time, they can just have to return them, yeah. Can't keep them.
Right. So then what happens when they get people? Then everybody's kind of stuck. And then they start burning, which is the burning ban right now, and. I just need to get kind of some kind of a solution, especially now with the, you know, the, all the leaves and everything else as well.
They don't just throw them away, I don't exactly remember the answer, but I know there's the on-call guys in the weekend, and there's a possibility that they could be able to help out, so people get in on weekends?
Could, but it could, but.
How, what is it going to cost? The on-call guys are already here two hours on Saturday, two hours on Sundays.
Yeah, that, that was what was brought up when I brought that up last month, is that then the on-call guys, they're only here for two hours, and some of them are here at 6:00 a.m., and some of them are here for the afternoon, and. I mean, it, it definitely needs to be open on the weekends at, at some point of, you know, whether someone in the city council or whatever just goes up there and opens it up at 8:00 a.m. and then has to close it at 1:00 or something, but I mean, it was.
You have to sit there all day.
Because the leaves are pretty bad. I mean, I've got six trees, and I'm out Friday, and they were already back on Saturday morning, so. And some people have more than that.
They're more volatile, I suppose.
That cheap, and I showed you there, Wayne, you could probably get it going in a week or so, just to have it open on Saturdays or.
Would you want to?
That would, you know, that would take care of a lot of the people, because a lot of them can't get there at the offices.
Well, they, they do this up in the offices, these papers, rest their phone number and stuff. They already do this up at the office.
Yeah, but who's ever there? Well, why do we have a problem? If that's already being done, why do we have a problem?
You know, some people already bring the key back, we know who they are.
No, 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 but I thought by having somebody there.
He said one sitting at the compo site.
Well, we gotta find somebody to sit there, we can't just say it's.
So we do have to run and get somebody in a week or so.
Yeah, but in a week or so, the season's over.
Season's over, boy, that's what we're looking at.
You're not supposed to straighten.
Yeah, so.
Just so everybody knows, just so everybody knows, we're not the only one that has done this. Everybody has closed their sites. That is the problem right now. I just got my newsletter from Rockford Township Hall, and right in it, it says, "Due to illegal dumping by residents, non-residents, and commercial haulers, we are closing our compo site indefinitely." So it's not just the city of Montrose doing it. The MPC permits everybody to have these composts and burn piles, and people aren't following the rules, and I'm not saying it's the residents, I think a lot of it is commercial people, and they're not following the rules, so everybody's shutting down their sites.
And is that fair to residents though?
It's not, and that's, but.
There's got to be some viable solution to come up with, whether or not, like I said, you get a key, where I need a copy of the key at my cost, not to the city, and gave you my information saying, "I have my own key," is that an issue? Instead of returning the keys, you have all my information saying, "I have a key."
Right.
You have surveillance showing my people dumping my stuff. What about that? What about if people want to get a copy of the key at their cost, not to the city, so I don't have to do the bathroom model, come in here and return it when I'm done?
That's going to be a security nightmare for us, don't you?
You get somebody in front of the car, and now they're going to dump the whole kind of stuff.
But if you're the first one in, then that makes that your responsibility to make sure nothing comes in happy, but you're not, longer time. And what, nobody goes in, but you're not?
And I can tell you from experience with the fire department, so I have 21 guys that I love and cherish on the fire department, they suck at locking doors. Sorry, guys.
You're not supposed to lock.
Who's not, who's your lock?
Has anybody looked into electronic gate?
Who is?
I know a lot of them, they'll do a keypad. They'll do a keypad, kind of like a storage unit, where you enter the keypad code. If you want to sign up for the keypad code, you put your name in that city hall, everybody has your information, then you have to digitally punch in, gate opens, then you can dump it. That kind of gets rid of the commercial, because if they don't have the code, they can't get in.
And, and you could do like a, uh, storage facility where you have your own code. Each person has their own code.
Right.
It's not the same code. And you tell them the code, and they put it into the controller. I think that's a better way to go.
Right now, you're just having, except the leaves removed, and also you got, everybody want to get rid of leaves, and suddenly there's nothing there. There's got to be some kind of.
Well, it's hard to believe everybody's concerned, so if we would leave it open, everybody's going to have to help police it then. If you see somebody dumping something legal, get the license.
Or they should have done that night, but certainly, I mean.
You know.
Well, that's just it.
We can shut it at 5:00, but we don't have people that are here after 4:30.
I mean, and it kind of goes back to the same situation that we're in right now, but it's only, what are we, October 12th? People are only going to be going into two more weeks.
Two more weeks.
Three at Mass.
Well, next spring, we'll try to hire somebody and.
Yeah.
Post the days it's going to be open, which isn't going to case everybody either.
So can we open it then for the next two weeks to the residents are cleaning up? And as you said, I think everybody here is going to, they're going to police it. I think everybody has, you know?
I'm curious, when you, when you're mentioning, you know, police it, and, you know, just a citizen of Montrose here, um, and I'm in there, and I'm getting rid of my grasp of things like I do, I just go in and shoot them back, pick up and launch them. But, uh, and all of a sudden, I see the guy pull up with so-and-so Chinese service. I mean, am I calling you guys? Is it great to, you know, walk up to the guy and go, hey, if you feel like you're not supposed to?
No, no, don't confront them, just get the invitation.
Well, maybe he's just oblivious, you know, he brings his blessing.
They know they can't dump in cities unless they.
So they already knows about it.
And all the signage is up there as to what is.
I don't, yeah, I see it, I see the what was in there too, so I understand why.
Yep, yep. So.
It's a, but it's a plan of what you're saying, policing it? Well, then I would take pictures and call somebody else.
Just, yeah, let's, let's.
You could reach out to any of us at any time, you know? We're, we're all available. If you see a year, then you see.
And again, that would be a happenstance, because I'm there for about 2.5 minutes.
Right. So, so Wayne, can we open it up for the next two weeks?
We're, we're going to lock all keys returned though.
Yeah.
I mean, all keys. I want you to show them, how many are missing?
Well, we'll call the people that have the keys, we have a couple, there's only a couple, right? She wrote, Michelle brought them, they'll go back.
Hell, mine.
Yes.
So you could let them know too, that, hey, you're returning those keys, that the rest of Montrose needs to have this thing open, and tell them you're holding up the shelf.
Yeah, I mean, you can, is Jess on vacation?
Well, she's not.
So if somebody could just put like you did, another level from the public works director saying, you know, if we have all the keys back, we will open it up until November, while they want the keys.
Here, I'll, I'll block the lock right now, because I want to clean up my yard. I'm serious. I want to clean my yard.
Well, the, I mean, I, I absolutely agree with you. I mean, it, it needs to be open, but we also need to have the people just follow the rules.
They won't.
Well, another thing about the keys is if you ever have to resort to that again, why would you not just put it, have them put a deposit on the key and just say, "You have to return it immediately after you're done using it."
Return it back.
Yeah, or something.
And, and I think, you know, like we said, it'll probably be closed up in November anyway, and so that gives us a few months to figure out what the plan is.
And to talk.
But we'll be opening it up in April. You know, whether we hire somebody, whether we have a passcode, whether, whatever it is we do.
Just a better plan.
Yeah, it'll be a much better plan in April.
True.
It, Jess had said last week, and I stopped up there, that it was taking a lot of her time to write down all the information and then get a hold of people to take keys, and I know Kevin had brought up last month too, that there could be a couple of months out of the year where we could potentially have it open 24 hours, as long as there's not, you know, when there's not, like this year, there wasn't all the big storms to knock stuff down, so it wasn't as big of a necessity until now.
So open?
So you want all the keys back before they're open?
I don't know that that's necessary.
I just say, open it up tomorrow when you come in, and it's all going to tell November.
We have their phone numbers, so we can.
We'll be able to, see if we can.
I don't want to encourage people to make a copy of the key.
No.
That is a security.
Is that likely to change tomorrow?
Change tomorrow. Well, what are, what are options, like I said, that you'd be looking at, like a gated type thing, or?
What's the, you're there days a week?
I think our best option is to have someone monitor it. All the cities around us do that. They hire someone to monitor it, and they're open for certain.
Is there a need for any kind of like better surveillance? I mean, I don't know, like, you guys, GAN cam and game.
I think they got every quarter of that place.
We have, we have.
They play back to that you can't do anything.
They can't, they can't do anything, I mean, they won't, you didn't even know they got it, and you can't do that.
You got to stop them before they drop it off.
Right. And that's. Early this year, I had a big pile of stuff we got that we don't take. Let's just stop bringing this.
Well, last year, I saw three-foot diameter. I was going to take them, but then I was like, oh, that's probably not people to take stuff out of the compo site, but I was like, these would be perfect for zillar. They're all the pond, like.
Two chunks of wood.
They were three-foot diameter pond. So I was like, that, that got going, right?
Well, they're big chunks, and somebody wants to do it.
Yeah, we want.
So are they going to have a, a separate pile for that kind of stuff, bigger, bigger chunks, or what's the aspect on that?
Can we, can we legally do that with our?
Yeah, I don't know.
No.
No, they're going to be able to burn it for 12 hours.
See, we're putting it right.
Yeah, we can, we can sell the pot, but people become a jinx, though. But they can't learn any stuffs in there.
I mean, they have big chunks of wood, you just post it on Facebook, it's going to be at your house in probably 20 minutes to pick the wood up, so.
Well, I just, I just want to make it clear too, that, um, I, I think that Ray County or any law enforcement agency would, would like to help us if they could, but because of lawsuits that all across the nation that law enforcement has endured, um, they can no longer give that information to a police officer. Both my children are police officers, they can't even look up a person's license number because they could lose their job on the spot doing that, so, um, they have to get very strict guidelines in place for that.
So I have a question. So are criminals, do they have more rights than the honest people that wait for everything?
Yes, they do.
You're going to have to prove them guilty, and if they're going to prove them guilty, they won't do it.
Well, you have pictures though, right?
Right.
Isn't that proof?
Well, sometimes it is. Commercial guy can embarrass them on Facebook, but personal person, I don't know if that's clearly.
Maybe somebody should look into that, see what, what you actually can do and what you can't do. Instead of speculating what you can't do, maybe you have more authority than you actually think you do. And maybe if the council would do their due diligence and actually research it, and then they could, they have a plan to address it.
Illegal dumping, is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
Well, we already got the information from one of our, one of our Ray County deputies that they can't give out that information, because it is a dump, it is a dump site.
But you can charge, you can prosecute, right?
We can, but at what cost?
Well.
I mean, I.
Maybe you make an example out of a few of them.
Right.
And word spreads, hey, don't go dumping Montrose, because they will come after you.
Well, last time we had it locked up, it worked really well. We didn't get all this stuff, because the COVID stuff started this spring, that's when we really started to take it. I mean, everybody's home, hanging, everything out.
I mean, if you're looking for help, there's a temp agency right in Downlow. I bet somebody's looking for a part-time job, and if you only need him for a couple of weeks, it's not like you got to put him on a, shouldn't have to put him in the union or anything.
You have a couple of weeks left this year, so we leave it open, starting around for a couple of weeks?
Whatever happened to the gentleman who's a ex-veteran disabled that was sitting out there about two years ago?
He moved, he moved out of town.
I mean, isn't there high school kids or just paying more than an hour?
What?
We're, we're going to check into that.
Charge everybody $5, and that'll be to pay for watching the whole thing done.
They just want to do this at the compo.
Oh, yeah, we're supposed to do that.
Maybe all involved, scary.
All right, so starting tomorrow, the council will be opening again at 12:00 Thursday, November, correct?
Correct.
All right, Wayne. Do you want a motion for that? We're good. No? That was open forum discussion, so no.
If I prove this passes.
Oh, well, yeah. Is that all the?
Open forum.
Yeah, that's, that's okay.
Just one?
Just the one, yep. Any other questions on that, since we got the open forum? Good? All right, thank you guys for coming. Uh, Ray County, where do you go? It's on.
What do you need, you have a wait for a call?
Uh, it's just a Ray County update.
Um, so looking at your guys' report, not a whole lot really is going on. Um, I know there's been some vandalism, some criminal damage to property stuff, but nothing too out of control. Um, from looking at Facebook, it appears that it's out of control, but it's not. Um, if you look at your guys' report that's included in your packet, there's only eight criminal damage to property incidents and five suspicious person incidents. So if, we need to know where things are happening, when they're happening. So it's very important for citizens to call the non-emergency or the emergency number to get us into the locations when suspicious activity or criminal activity has occurred. Otherwise, we just drive the streets, and I know the guys out here right now are driving the streets constantly. Um, a lot of the CDPs, they look at their ring camera, and yeah, 15 minutes before the kids did this, we saw you drive by on the ring camera. So, um, it's not that they're not out patrolling the streets and stuff, they are, they're doing a great job of doing that. Um, we just need the phone calls and the information as to where and what's happened.
Can I ask a request to get a little more security out at the skate park area?
They try. Um, I try as well. Um, again, we're dragging around big mark, angst is what I like to refer to them as. Um, and basically, yeah, it's a sheriff on the side, but might as well just say run.
Right.
And that's generally what happens. And, you know, if it's a group of kids, and I go get the skate park, and they take out running, probably not going to run out home.
No.
It's more, I'm gonna end up tripping and falling and hurt myself, and, um, and that's kind of the same thing. Even our policy kind of dictates when we should, we shouldn't do a court pursuit on somebody. Um, but they know that that's an issue out there. They're trying to hit all the parks as often as they can. Um, it, again, it's just very difficult, and our numbers don't really support a whole lot of extra manpower or, um, specialty assignments at this point, just because the numbers are not crazy. Um, I can reference, uh, another city in Ray County where those numbers are two, three hundred times higher. And yeah, we, we do draw all the resources into it. If we see a problem, we're gonna try and take care of it. Um, but if the numbers don't show a problem, it's hard for us to take care of it.
Right. Just occasionally try.
Wow, that's the only, we try.
All right, thank you. Um, council?
Council, yeah. Uh, Montrose City Council and we're using management. I'm gonna talk right now. Oh, okay, Montrose. Montrose City Council meeting yesterday talking about the possibility of no more term of lockdown days because we don't have volunteers or anybody to help us with it, so it is definitely on the agenda for next month to possibly handle that completely. Or maybe one day celebration, depending. That's what we're at right now.
More importantly, we need people to come and help put this event on because it is very important to the community to continue to get this stuff going and, um, you know, three board members coming out, all the organizations, um, I mean, that's all we can do with pretty much a bag. So. Yes, are you planning to start this with Santa this evening?
We're still, we're still trying to figure out how we're going about it.
Okay, that was my question.
Yeah, but we still are.
Because we have that limited.
We're just, we're just trying to figure out religious things about it.
I think they talked matches like I heard the other time or something in intervals.
Like talking on a slot, stuff like that, kind of.
Do a, do a sign up genius or give time to people.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then there'll be no contact with Santa. Ho, ho, ho.
I don't know, it's in the air. I just want to, I have the Peter's camera on, he's very competitive.
And then.
Halloween parade?
Yeah. Oh, hello.
It's, uh, well, it'll be Halloween night, and then it's going to be starting at four forty-five. Four forty-five at the city hall, and it's gonna end here. Quick little parade for the kids, costume contest afterwards, um, little bags of candy, uh, flying will be here, you know, candy as well to do a little for the kids. And then, yeah, so maybe short and simple, nothing too complicated for the kids, who all have their, you know. Do you have a question? So if you have a question, you can tell us, and, yeah. Go over there.
Thank you. Um, let's see, I had Park and Rec, union negotiations, city council meetings, uh, Ray County Public Health, which I had that meeting this morning, and they're actually in special sessions voting tonight as to approve, um, one point four million dollar, uh, dental center at the, currently the government center, which as soon as the, um, everybody moves out there, the government center will be turned into a dental center. So, um, legislators are looking at, um, passing the bond to give a one point four million dollar approval to get that out of the going, so. On that, that's all I got.
Council meetings, workshop, planning is only on September council.
Council meeting and fire department last month.
Oh, and we did the food truck event. I was in that. Yeah. So, all right, Kevin. Did I miss?
Yeah, yeah, correct.
Oh, right. Sorry.
Yeah, sit down, Karen.
Grab your seat.
Karen, you wanna go up with me?
Please, Dave.
Greg, you live near Three Fine Darfield, that's Minnesota, right near Montrose, and there's Karen, Karen, you gonna visit?
Karen, Kirk, and I was five to one, we're just ignoring Montrose.
And we'll be heading up the Montrose Beer Candidates Event this year. It'll be a little bit different. There's a flyer over here on the table. Um, questions will not be given out beforehand, although we will expect the candidates to have a one-minute piece on who they are, and then a two-minute wrap-up at the end of it, so you prepare those. All the other questions will be off the cuff, so you know, the idea of where your knowledge bases are, how you can react to questions, and be by your feet, that kind of stuff. Um, I've given out some invites all of you, so I'm out by email. Uh, I got an RSVP from Michelle, Sam, Kirby, and, uh, Nicole. I haven't got one back from Roy or from Lloyd. Did you get the email, Roy?
Yes, I did, but I won't be here.
You won't be here, no?
Okay, because of COVID, I can't imagine anybody being here for that because.
No, it'll be, it'll be a little bit different. We will be distancing because of COVID. Same thing we do here, requiring masks as well. Candidates will be separated by six feet, just like you are now. You're distanced a little bit, not quite six feet, but then you'll be able to be distanced. And then people will have to wear a mask when they're mingling or moving about, but they won't necessarily have to proceed with that six-foot distance. Um, topics will include taxes, architect infrastructure plans, costs, vision, and goals, city planning, candidate qualifications, economic development and growth, council functions, personal management, budget and managing expenses, and certainly other topics that may come up from submissions. Submissions can either be by email. We've got a shared email box that we both see, so there's visibility there. It's at montroesmnvotes@gmail.com. So montroesmnvotes@gmail.com. And Karen and I review all of those, and then we'll look at those and consolidate those into questions that'll fit into those topic areas. Um, there won't be any direct rebuttals back and forth of candidates. We all saw the spectacle and how that works, and it didn't go very well, so we will have responses directed to the audience rather than to other candidates so that we can maintain the coordinate in the process. I hope you have a good debate, and if there's any questions, please let Karen and I know, or if you got, put our email, our phone numbers and emails, give the letter I sent to you. Thank you for shit. I'll see you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks. Okay, done.
Here in the evening, Mayor and Council. Um, included in your packet is our September activity report, um, four month from September than it was in October anyway, so that's a good thing for us. Um, a special note is we were awarded a grant from Comcur Financial. It's a farm financial group. Um, it's a three thousand dollar non-mach, non-machining grant that we're gonna be using just for some various equipment throughout the department, so, um, appreciate that and stuff, and we'll probably have more from them in the future on that, so. Any questions on the activity report? Uh, next item is authorization to purchase twenty-five sets of turnout gear utilizing CARES Act funding. Um, price should be around seventy-five thousand dollars, depending on the final cost of the turnout gear that you spec out, so.
I'm making motion to approve the spending of the fire, fire turnout gear. Nicole? Right. Uh, would I, would Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passes for zero. You said that one yet?
No.
No.
I'm trying. This is my last one right here. I'm running out of time really fast, so.
All right.
Um, and this does meet the three-tiered questions that we do have to work on, and many other departments are doing the exact same thing as we're trying to do it at the state, so.
We've, we've done a good job of it.
Yeah, yeah, he's, yeah, he's good at it.
Yeah. Um, so then I just wanted to give some information on fire prevention this year. Um, so fire prevention was last week, October fourth through the tenth. Um, this year's, um, theme was serve up fire safety in the kitchen, so it was really revolving around fire safety in the kitchen. Um, kitchen fires are the number one leading cause of house fires in the United States of America. Um, due to COVID, this year we had to change how we normally do our fire prevention, so, um, we couldn't go and see the kids, and the kids couldn't come see us. Um, so I wrote a, a letter with basically all the questions that they ask us every year and everything that we go over every year. Gave it to the teachers, gave it to the kids, bring home to their parents and stuff, um, gave them a goodie bag, so the information and everything was still there, it's just the delivery was a little bit different, so. Um, just some things to note, um, I try and do this every year, very fire prevention. Um, smoke detectors, make sure you're testing them and change, testing them once a month, changing the batteries twice a year. We recommend changing them when you change your clocks for daylight savings time. Um, if your house is not fire, be able to stay out, don't go back into the house to get anything or anybody. Um, have an evacuation plan, develop and practice those plans. If your family has a meeting place outside. And as far as, uh, kitchen stuff, grease fires are the number one cause of kitchen fires in the United States. Um, the biggest thing with grease fires is you cannot put water on a grease fire. It causes a lot of issues. Um, turn off burner, cover it with a towel or a lid or something along those lines. Call the fire department and get out of the house and stay out of the house so we can get it taken care of and, um, everybody's safe, so. Uh, if anybody wants any more information on fire prevention, feel free to get ahold of me or look up the website, uh, on the Anethene Gate, there's plenty of information on there as well. Um, next item is, um, hiring firefighters. I would just kind of like pre-authorization to hire, um, firefighters. We're working through the process right now, and I want to get them going as soon as possible here, um, for a couple of different reasons. Um, so I'm looking to authorize the hiring of firefighters pending the hiring process results, which we normally just take up, take care of in-house. There's never really been any controversy or questions or anything that it's brought up. We vet our people pretty well. Um, take it through, not a huge process, but it's a process nonetheless. Um, so I'm just looking for authorization to hire, um, firefighters pending the hiring process results. I have four and a half right now, so. I'll take four more.
I'll make a motion to authorize the hiring firefighters pending the hiring process results.
All right, uh, Lloyd?
All right.
Kirby?
Yes.
Uh, I and a vote. All right, motion passes for zero.
And I'll come back once the hiring process is done and get them officially hired on with the full statement and stuff, so that's just normal. Uh, next item, um, is we are looking to increase our pension level. So currently, our pension is set at four thousand dollars per year service with the fire department. Partial vested after five years, fully vested after twenty years. Um, so we had a cost analysis completed by Para, which, uh, runs our pension. Um, so we are, our board voted and decided to, um, request a pension increase of two forty-five hundred dollars per year for, um, per year service. Um, with that amount, we are still well overfunded in our, um, what we need to pay out. Um, they like to try to keep us somewhere, well, we have to stay at one hundred percent. Um, we, uh, we're kind of playing the conservative game a little bit, and we want to stay a little bit higher than that. So with no extra contribution, uh, at forty-five hundred, we're at one hundred and three percent. That's not including the forty-two thousand dollars dirty from the fire department, all from the city that goes into Para every year. Um, this money, um, which continues to grow and grow and grow, um, is from the higher state aid, our investment through Para, um, the forty-two thousand dollars from the city and the fire department, um, and we just are very fortunate to be in this position. Um, it's a great recruitment and retention tool in our arsenal. Um, a lot of people don't even realize that this exists, but it is kind of a perk, it just takes time to get there. Um, I never really imagined when I joined the fire department that after twenty years I'd actually be able to get a pretty decent-sized check after, um, I turned age fifty, so. Um, it is a nice thing that's there and it's out there. Um, so to conclude with this, it's a resolution that Mandy took care of for us, um, and it's just, uh, looking for your guys' approval.
Make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty dash twenty-seven.
I'll say it.
All right, I will vote I. Nicole, all right, Kirby?
Yes.
Lloyd? Motion passes for zero.
I think that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Uh, Park and Rec, we had a meeting last week, um, let's see, the night to unite was what, on Tuesday? We had food trucks out, we had four different food trucks, and then one painting, um, vendor, which I, I believe was a pretty good turnout for our first time doing it, um, in and out. I mean, all the vendors gave a good feedback. They were actually kind of nervous pulling into the little town Montrose whether they were gonna have a good night or not. Now, they did really well, so, um, look forward to doing it next year. Um, we're still trying to figure out the Lions Club, they're donating trees and fences to us, as to what, what kind of trees and where the last quarter they're gonna give them to us next spring. Um, I did hear back from the Fish Sunflower Field guy. He will be getting in contact with me, hopefully within the next week. She'll come out and take a peek at, um, if she would be willing to come and put a sunflower field out here. Um, the twenty twenty-one events? Oh, good, we have no idea. Um, we're gonna hopefully, still, we're still gonna do the Christmas caroling in December with Santa, um, following Breakfast with Santa that night, so, um, and we'll still do escape day in January just because it's outdoors anyways, so, but that's right now, that's the only twenty twenty-one events we have. Uh, let's see. We'll talk about Carver Field and Northwood Park later with Wayne. That's all I got. Deb, you wanna do planning and zoning?
Sure. Um, we're asking you to accept, um, Ms. Tracy Greenow's resignation from Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, her work schedule doesn't allow her to make that meeting anymore on Wednesday nights, so I just need a motion to accept that.
I'll make a motion to accept Tracy Greenow's, um, planning and zoning.
I'll say it.
Uh, I will vote I and Nicole, I, Kirby?
I'm staying.
And Lloyd. Motion pass, motion passes three to one.
And then I was just going to tell you that we, on Wednesday night, at the planning and zoning meeting, are going to be talking about beekeeping in the city. Um, we had a resident that contacted the city about doing something like that, and I did check with both our city attorney and our city planner. It is illegal to do within city limits. Um, city council can, can make certain restrictions if they want to allow people to do it, but we're gonna bring it to the plant. We have nothing on our books, on our ordinance, in our ordinance about it, and so in order to regulate it, we need to get something in the ordinance, so we're gonna be discussing it on Wednesday.
We did have that before. A gentleman on First Street North, well, that had, I don't know, well, their, recently just looked like their plan was that they don't have to follow bees after.
Yeah, that was one of the things that the city planner did find in his research, that if you designate certain areas in your city that are agricultural, that's really the only place that it's, it's legal to do that, so.
See, Wayne, what's this?
Open up another camp, I was thinking we went through the chicken business.
Well, again, I still.
Yeah, we're back.
We still want chickens.
We did?
Yeah.
No, because the reason, the reason city, city staff talked about it when we got through the question, we thought about how close neighbors are each other, and there's a lot of people that are highly allergic to bees, and a lot of people that have children that are playing in their yards, and if someone next door has bees, um, what exactly does that mean for those people? So, that's what we're gonna take a look at.
Yeah, because you can't keep the bees in that one area, there's plenty more.
Right.
Okay. Uh, city engineer, Jared's not here.
I will take that. Um, you have me for you, uh, resolution twenty twenty-eight, and basically, what you're doing with that resolution is at your August thirty-first workshop, um, Jared, the engineer, went over with you the amendments and the, the amendments and the scope of work for the project that he put together after the city to, with residents' testimony, and also what direction the city council gave you. And so before you tonight is just a resolution, um, ordering preparation of report on the improvements. And then you see the schedule that we're gonna be following. Um, he will give you that report at our October twenty-sixth, uh, specialty council meeting, and then we will again have another open house and another public hearing.
In November?
In November, yep.
So, in this resolution, is it, um, part of, I wasn't at that workshop, so, um, is that, uh, Central Avenue North opening up to Second Street? Is that in this resolution?
This resolution is just to order the report so they can start.
To get it going?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Mark.
Make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty dash twenty-eight.
Okay. All right, I was the board, I and Lloyd, Nicole, I, Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passes for zero. Uh, Wayne?
Here on council, we got the, uh, final payment for February twenty-five. And last night, there was a change order on it. The statement was temporarily stripped. So we all kind of followed that, you know, we, and they wanted us to kick in. Everybody did, the state did, contractor did, and the state said that the city doesn't, the contractor, it's useless, so. And this would be their final payment.
Well, the residents, they're all aware of this.
We're the residents.
Well, you know, the ones that have the weed problems and all of that.
This is just restricting.
This is just restricting. The weed problem was. This is just restricting. The weed problem was over yet, but...
Okay.
That's why we're just...
Yeah, they sprayed for broadmills, but they didn't spray for the other...
I called them, and they came back. I sprayed the whole set, they were stuck.
Not yet.
So, we do need a motion in a second, but the change order, please.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm...
Make a motion to approve change order number four, Trump Highway 25 improvement project.
Sound good.
All right, Kirby?
Yes.
Lloyd?
No.
I will, I, and Nicole. All right, motion passes three to one.
Should it be three one or three oh one?
Three oh and one.
Yeah.
No, three and one.
Can he vote on it?
Are you trying to confuse him?
Oh, I don't know. He lives there, so can he vote?
He, he voted. So, yeah, we'll have to, well, he said no, so you're right, three oh one. And our favorite topic, Euro.
The last item is, I got the price of putting some lights in Northridge Park to put a permanent skating rink, up where the community gardens used to be. We have lights and everything. There's going to be enough power there for a warming house, maybe next year with a little heat in it. And the estimated cost is $8,500. They'll set the poles and run the power, and then we'll set the rink up accordingly. We'll make the biggest rink we can, and it'll be permanent, and it'll be banked, so we can fill it with water and water wheels, and what we talked about last year, so...
Did you see how big it was going to be?
As big as possible.
Oh.
As big as possible, I mean...
We have three rigs.
Yeah, we're just going to put them all together and use all the best pieces and...
I do...
Power's actually already there. It's a 200 amp service we can use. It is, it doesn't belong in the city, so maybe we could trudge across, set a couple poles with LED lights on, and we could go.
Will the lights have timers on them or something like that?
Yeah, the timers.
Are they sure that there's someone right out there, everybody in there, and then some...
There's a fire hydrant right next to there.
Yep.
Yeah.
And the city crew will hopefully take care of this year while we, while we have it all, but people want to help as much. We'll maybe do a little more than we're going to do.
So, do you approve for the $8,500?
Yes.
Okay, I'm making a motion to approve the ice rink project at Northridge Park up to $8,500.
All right, discussion? For me, I guess after you're voting. So, it's at $8,500. Do you have a time when they're going to be coming out to get it done?
Do I have a time?
Yeah, when are they coming out to put the lights in?
I'm supposed to call tomorrow if it was okay.
So, then they'll be here on Wednesday?
No, so I'm scared with me.
Do we know how far out they are?
No, they don't though.
So, will they be in, in time for rain?
Yes. They told me when I talked to the owner last Thursday. Only the company that got the bid for it. He does all the city's wiring, so... We'll be fine.
I still don't want it out there.
I can honestly tell you that actually before the all summer tournament this year, Carver's went out to the field, and I was told that ice rink is ruining the field from the, and that came from Carver's. And that was a discussion last year, where we didn't want it there to work, because it was ruining the field, and...
Right.
I talked with Jamie Carver, who backed him, said he'd been out there, and he said it was a mess because of that ice rink. Because the guys hadn't been out there doing anything about summer fall.
Right.
But just now, he got to see what it actually was doing, so he said, he said it was ruining the field.
But shouldn't we still have been out there doing something with it? Because there were, were still people out there. We still should have...
We've been, we've been, but we've been trying a lot of weeks to go here. Can we spray it?
But we still should have been maintaining it.
I think, then he told me he drug it about five or six times to get it to go back because of having the rain sitting on it.
That's a big hole in the year.
Yeah, because it soaks away.
Yeah. All right, we have a motion second and discussion. Now, let's go for our vote. And Lloyd? Kirby?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Wayne, do you promise to have lights out there?
If I have to, I can, I'll...
I mean, the kids love that ice rink, so I just, it's got to be out there, so...
Well, we'll make a good piece of work.
All right. I will, yes, then. Motion passes three to one. Forest Creek.
The next item is Forest Creek Park. What I did over the summer was a non-earbored bid for putting in concrete, digging the hole, under drains, and everything, and came back, had $41,002, $12,000. That's a lot of concrete going on my plan. And set up the three benches, and be good to go. And the guy who had the bid for, talked to our homes, and the first thing they did was they kicked in $10,000, and put a letter out to all their vendors. So far, one has given another $500, so we'll get much more. Maybe get started on that too.
When do you plan on starting on that?
Soon as the contractor can.
Still just this...
I don't get, they might get the hole in, the under drains, down the concrete, and I spray that, we'll get these, so it's pretty light.
So, you, do you need approval on Sunday?
Of course.
What cost are you looking at with your deductions?
We don't, well, we don't know until...
Just keep it at the...
Right. We aren't going to know until...
Until everybody comes in?
Right.
All right.
Make a motion to approve the spending of, up to $42,000 for the installation of the park at Forest Creek House Development.
I'll say it.
Any discussion on that? All right, I will, I, and Kirby?
Yes.
Nicole? All right, Lloyd?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero. Do you have anyone on the compost?
Nope, I'm divided. It's going to be open.
All right, I have a couple of questions for you, though. We have an issue at 521 First Street, the drainage gate over there. I believe Jared and Justin are over there at one point to take care of that, fix it.
That's not a big issue according to them. All you got to do is we'll get somebody in there to dig that little covey deal in.
Yeah.
That's all we can do.
And then fix the, the screen gate thing, right?
Yeah, that's what we're going to do.
Yeah.
And we told you, and we told everyone, it's not a big, like, the, you have a ditch out here by the handle grannies, and then we got another one up, up Breckenridge. They're going to dig those plates out of that pond back there. And then that will be next.
So, spring?
Probably.
Okay. Huh? 521 First Street, yep. And then we have an issue still over at the property body out to Reeder Park. Any word on that?
Well, I talked to Justin Saturday, and he said he reached out to two landscapers, and they haven't gotten back to him with the price of the town, so...
Do you know what landscapers they reached out to?
I don't know. There's one just outside the town, and I think one's out. Maybe somebody out there.
Okay. So, do we just update that, that property owner, because we have, doesn't, that's what's going on?
She did.
No, she left.
Oh, she left?
She did.
Oh, she left.
She left. Okay, I'll just start to know that, that he's reached out to a couple, and, okay.
Yeah, we have somebody coming to look at it, and they just want to straighten the dirt up. That's what we're going to do. And I'll not put it in a tank. That's, that's what they can do.
Right, because if, I mean, we're just filling it with dirt, isn't there still going to be another issue?
Well, I don't know about that.
Were they talking about retaining them?
That was mentioned, and nobody promised anything.
We'll see when they come back.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mentioned that to Justin. She told you about retaining the home. And I talked about it, but we didn't say anything, we didn't get any more of it out of order. We're just going to have somebody look at it and then come up with a plan.
All right, nothing on your old business, nothing on your new business. So, then we have upcoming meetings this, this Wednesday, 7 o'clock. My name is Owen. EDA is next Tuesday at noon. Special City Council, Monday, April 26th at 4 o'clock. General election is November 3rd. We have rights meeting candidates October 27th. Perk and Rec meets Thursday, the 5th, regular council meeting, November 9th. Planning and zoning is to be determined. EDA again, Tuesday, 17, and City Council workshop, November 23rd. Acknowledgements, I have, are you still doing the commissioners thing? 29! Yes, October 29th. Thank you. And acknowledgements, I would like to thank Greg and Karen for reporting on the meeting candidates. Tracy for her service on planning and zoning is very much appreciated.
I'd like to thank the vendors and the people that came out on night the night. Also, the reminder about the detour that's going to be for the railroad tracks this Thursday and Friday, right?
Yeah, yeah.
The detour says to go all the way out to 107th through Waverly, so...
Oh, yeah.
Just put it out.
And the Way山路 to 12th, that's access. So, anything else? The motion for adjournment? I have a motion for adjournment.
Second.
I'm better.
Yes.
And if oh, we are adjourned. Thank you all for showing up tonight.
They offered on this one?
Welcome to the door, partner.
I think the guy is...
I am, I am.
I, yeah, I think, because I think a lot of the fire control.
Derek, are you, I see, right now, it's all recorded, so... I understand, but I'm signing out, so I'm hanging on, and I'm sorry, I don't think I know, which is like... Is there, is there a break in open, so I can handle it?
I'll mention, yes, I'll mention sort of... Try to talk to everything?